Okay. Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, six p.m. Thursday, May 2nd, 2019. We start our meetings with a moment of silence and Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led tonight by Councilperson Earl Elliott.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Ms. Elliott, would you call the row?
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nasser.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Is our tradition of thirty minutes of comment from the public on items that are not on our agenda, if you're not sure whether the item you're interested in tonight is on our agenda or not, you may get an agenda up here at the front on the pew here. If you want to comment on something that is on the agenda, you will do that at the time that that is brought forward. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your address, and also, please limit your comments to about three minutes. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
My name is Donald Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street. I'm here today because this is the last city council meeting before the primaries, which will be Tuesday. It'll be the election of the primaries, and the race after that election is over will be on. I say I'm here to talk to you, but I'm also here to talk to everybody who can hear my voice. You guys are recording this and sending it out for everybody, so I'm going to tell you the one thing we need is information. The one thing we have to have both as a city councilman, you people need information so you can make your decisions better and more clearly, but you must communicate to us what they are. And I'll tell you why I mean that. Right here is a single dollar bill. I am without a doubt one of the poorest citizens in this town, and I can have a dollar bill to spend the way I want to spend it. There are 100,000 citizens in Vigo County. All of them could have a dollar bill. 100,000 citizens, and easy math is $100,000. Everybody out $1. You could take that $100,000, if the community wanted to get it together, and plan to do something with it, $100,000 will do something. It may not be big-time money, but it can help do something. Why is Terre Haute right now not doing something? You take that same $1 and you times it by 365 days out of the year. Everybody could part $1 a week, including me. I'm not big at math, but that's big money. That's money. Two years of that, that's $1 million, just $1 at a time. What are we raising funds to help put back the interstructure? I'll tell you why. Business. For people to have the ability to do something, they've got to have land. You have the ability to buy land. You have the ability to come up with land. Then you have the ability to have citizens take an interest in some project, and I don't care what it is, but they've got to have the land. Now, the people, they also need, well, what keeps them, the same thing that keeps them from raising money now, they don't feel like they're in a community anymore. They feel left out. It's simple. If Vigo County got together and felt like they were citizens, they would come out and vote. You wouldn't have to drag them to the polls. They'd show up on their own, like I do. And when they vote, you'd understand what they cared about. You'd understand where to guide that money, and that's the donated money. That's not the money that we're forced to give to the county council, the city council, and the mayor for basic needs of our community. Whether they like it or not, it's gone. You decide where that money goes. But in order to make that decision correctly, and I mean this as a democracy, gentlemen, I don't care if you're a Democrat or a Republican, we, the people, have to know what you're thinking. When you run for office, I love running for the school board. I ran for one reason and one reason only, as I told you before. The only time the school board would tell you how they felt about any issue was when they were running for office, for exactly three months, every four years. And, well, two years, because some of them had to run off-bend. But the bottom line, those two years, I'd always make sure I ran for the school board, because I could ask them questions and find out why they weren't doing certain things or why they wanted to do certain things. It's the only time they ever told it, honestly. I've been here for a year and a half, and I've rarely heard you guys say why you're doing anything. Now, I've heard the politics. Said I've heard the budgets. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about something bigger than that. What are you doing to make the city of Terre Haute a better place to live in? What are you doing to put back or help put back the safety net that's disappearing, slowly but surely? And again, you have the power. This money, we could raise $100,000 tomorrow, but it would do us no good if we don't have the land, or we don't have the city council saying, "You can do this. We'll help you organize it and pass the regulations." Also, you don't come across in these elections telling us what you want to encourage, what you want to make Terre Haute better. You expect people to come here and say, "These are our problems," but you don't tell us what you see as the problem and what we could do about it. And that's why you've got a committee, a community that's willing to put a dollar each and make $100,000 like that. And that's not tax money. That's other money. This community needs to come together again as a community. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? If not, we'll move on to Corrections of the Journal.
There are none.
Any communications from the mayor?
There are none.
Reports from city officials?
There are none.
Reports from the Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees? I think we have one from Finance. Is that correct?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Okay. I've passed out to you a number of documents that I've put together upon receipt of the 2018 year-end financial statements. The first schedule I want to talk briefly about is just a one-page spreadsheet that updates the property tax revenue for 2018. Far-right-hand column, total 2018 property tax revenue to the city's funds, $23,283,15, which is 5.3 percent more than 2017, 9 percent more than 2015. And I provide, you know, how much went into each of the funds that received that. And if you recall, which funds received how much, you know, just kind of floats and moves around based upon which funds need the revenue to stay positive and need the revenue to pay their bills. So, the next page I want to talk about is a normal-sized eight-and-a-half-by-eleven page. One of the issues that we began, I began hearing about a couple of years ago, first from the mayor, then from the others, was with property assessments, particularly, you know, along Third Street and the restaurants. So I had my staff, someone on my staff, go through and prepare this list of the different restaurants, and with the one January 1, '17 and January 1, '18 assessed valuations. You'll see the line in the middle of the page, those organized kind of from north to south. You'll see that line in the middle of the page where there were some significant increases in those valuations further south that you go. That was one of the goals of Terre Haute Competes, was to get that situation kind of corrected somewhat. Of course, one of the ways they wanted to do that was dealing with who the Harrison Town, or who the county assessor was. I'll talk to the assessor when I get a chance about the properties north of that line and find out what, you know, what the status is there, because those, a lot of those seem very low to me. And then you've got a set of documents that are stapled together. It's about five pages of information. I'll walk through that as quickly as I can. The first page is just the year-end cash balances of what I consider to be the city's operating funds, you know, the ones that pay the bills for the different purposes that they are intended to. I want to focus first on the total. You'll see that the total of all those funds was at negative $9.1 million at the end of It improved to $4.7 million at the end of '16. It improved to $2.8 million at the end of '17, and it proved to $671,000 negative at the end of '18. Of course, we, the term of this council began in January of '16, and the '16 budget, though, was approved by the prior council. So it was the '17 and '18 years that we were involved in setting the budgets that should have had resulted in the surpluses and the reductions in the deficit cash balances, and that's what has happened. The total has, continues, the total deficits continue to go down. Obviously, we should go black when we get to the end of '19 in these funds, if we add another $2.5 to $3 million, you know, like we have been, and I think that's a good thing. We can all remember 2016 and the challenges we had, beginning with a presentation from Mumbaugh, January meeting, talking to us about different ways to increase revenue. We went right into a trash fee discussion that took us a number of months to make a decision as we got ourselves familiar with that and finally made one. We got into the stormwater fee discussion that we dealt with for several months and decided we didn't like that. We found out in the spring of 2016 that the city was 2.2, $2.4 million behind in funding the debt service reserve related to the SRF loan, and that was a major, imagine a major problem for the SRF and the state officials that are in control of our state. We borrowed money from the county about that time, maybe even a little before that time, $6 million. That money went into the wastewater treatment funds and helped solve that problem. We also learned that we were not, the wastewater treatment finances were not meeting the debt service coverage ratios, the 125 percent debt service coverage ratios, and we had difficulty getting our arms around that. In the end, we passed a sewer rate increase to, so we would meet those requirements and also to fund some debt service for Phase II of the Long-Term Control Plan. Turned out, the Long-Term Control Plan, Phase II, took a little longer to come about, so that 6 percent that we had in that increase for that purpose, I suppose, is now being used to make the repayments to the county, the $750,000 semi-annual repayments to the county. I mean, it's pretty close to what that number is. Part of the improvement came about because we had state law change. Under the old budget rules, you were allowed to ignore the property tax cap loss and include that in your projected year-end cash balance, even though you weren't allowed to, you weren't going to receive it. They changed that law, and that was a big part of the 2017, 1782 notice, where we had to cut, you know, $4, $4.5 million out of the general fund budget. Took most of the year before that action came before us, but some expenses were moved, primarily to edit EMS non-reverting and some to one of the capital CCI fund, I believe it was. So, our improvement, a lot of that has been funded basically by the trash, or wooden half. Just wanted to point that out. And you'll see a lot of that, you know, in the general fund. I subtract the DRO loans, you know, up at the top, or any short-term debt we have at the end of the year, and although we had a positive balance in the bank account of $405,000, we had a $2 million DRO loan, so the net was 1.6 million, but that's substantially less than $8.8 million negative three years ago, '12, '13. If you go forward to the next page, there's a three-page schedule where I just summarize the year-end cash balances over the last four years, four-year ends. The operating funds that you see at the top half of Page Two, those are the same as Page One. I just repeat those there. And then the funds that I believe are in the, under the Department of Redevelopment Control, they start at the bottom of Page Two and carry on over to Page Three, and you can see their totals, about a third of the way down of the page. Their balances have gradually climbed over the three years from $8.7 million in total to a little over $11 million. Then the next section is the wastewater and sanitary district funds, and you see their totals, $31.4 million to $27.7 billion, some decline, but I believe a lot of that decline is related to some of the preliminary expenses that they've incurred related to Long-Term Control Plan Phase II, because the main operating fund, Fund 620, you can see that was, you know, $9.9 million at the end of 2018, a very, very healthy balance in that fund. If there's one that you want to have a really healthy balance in out of all of those, it would be that one, as long as we're meeting everybody's requirements. And then we get into, there's some other miscellaneous funds with some reasonable balances that I detail there, and then just all other funds and recap that. So, I feel pretty good about the progress we've made in our cash balances. Our State Board accounts audits were, we had some going concern comments in 2014 and 2015. We did not have those in 2016 and 2017, so that's also an indication from them that our finances are getting better. Then the next two pages, I don't want to, I won't talk about those very much, but those are the same '18 main operating funds, and just the total revenues and total expenses for each of the last three years, and the balance at the end of the year. And then I summarize the property tax revenue that any of those funds had retained, and try to explain some of the significant changes that, you know, that I could see. But it's not anything too, really, that I want to talk about or present. It's just kind of there for your reference, so you can, you know, you can kind of see when you get a chance to study it, how these funds, you know, improved in balance, whether it was more revenue or less expense, or just what the purpose was. We sit here today, oh, let me make a couple of comments on Page Six. The total column, the revenue increase in the total revenue column, 2017 over 2016 was only 2/10 of a percent. In all sources, $70,031 for '17 versus $69,881 for '16. 2018 was only, was 2.1 percent over 2017, and 2000, it looks like 2018 was 2.8 percent over 2016. So in total, we haven't had significant increases in total revenue yet. We've been able to, you know, improve our cash balances, and I think that's positive. As we sit here today, we're on the cusp of a convention center becoming real. We have the Chamber of Commerce working on a community plan, what we can do to improve our community. It's pretty active. I've been to one meeting on that. I was at another meeting with Indiana Main Street and the Chamber, where they're working on a downtown plan, and now perhaps a, you know, a casino is maybe in play for us. I see all of those initiatives and efforts, you know, kind of fairly closely related, and we're on the, you know, I think we're just on the cusp of some significant, exciting things for the community. So, if anybody has any questions now or any time on these numbers, let me know. The mayor did know I was going to give a presentation, although he didn't know what I was going to say, and he had indicated to me, I think he'll be giving one next week. So, I just, I had it done. I just wanted to go ahead and get it out there for us.
Thanks, Earl. We appreciate you putting us together. Anybody in council have a comment or a question for Earl at this point? Yes, how?
I'd just like to say thank you, and it's very helpful for me personally to have things summarized this way and laid out, and opportunity to ask questions in the whole pit, so thanks a lot, Earl.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks, Earl.
Okay.
Any other standing committee reports?
I received none.
Okay. Reports from outstanding committees?
I received none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
There are none.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to exercise my prerogative and move an item to the start of the agenda on action items, and I'd like to ask Pete to come in as we do that. And Michelle, would you read for us Resolution Number Five, 2019?
Would you like me to read it in its entirety?
Would you please?
Yes. One moment.
Come on up, Pete.
Resolution Number Five, 2019, a resolution recognizing Terre Haute Police Officer Peter E. Horstmann's 29 years of service to the city of Terre Haute, whereas on the 20th day of February 1990, Peter E. Horstmann was appointed as a member of the Terre Haute Police Department, and whereas Officer Horstmann has carried out his 29 years of duty as patrolman in the Uniform Division of the Terre Haute Police Department, which include five years on assignment as City Hall Security Officer, and whereas, in addition to assigned duties, Officer Horstmann diligently served our community through several extra-duty assignments, which include several years on the department's Special Response Team, Incident Response Team, and bicycle patrol, whereas Officer Horstmann has proudly represented the Terre Haute Police Department and his fellow officers in various activities such as parades, ceremonies, memorials, and law enforcement officer funerals as a member of the Terre Haute Police Department Honor Guard for several years. Therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Terre Haute, Indiana, that it wishes to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of Officer Peter E. Horstmann has made to the city of Terre Haute and its citizens through his commitment to public safety and service. Be it further resolved that the Common Council of the City of Terre Haute, Indiana specifically appreciates the assistance and efforts Officer Horstmann has provided to the council through his career.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this resolution? Welcome back, John.
I just want to thank the council for recognizing Pete. Pete's been, I've worked with him, and so obviously January 1, my whole career at Terre Haute, when he got hired, he's been an exemplary officer. As you mentioned, I think it's great that you're recognizing him this way before he retired, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Is there anybody from council who'd like to make a comment?
President Crossen?
Yes.
I would just like to point out, someone kept changing their retirement date.
Well, we wouldn't be too sad if you changed it for a long time away, but we didn't want to catch you before you were gone, Pete, so want to make sure that we recognize your work for us, and it's important for us to have someone here in security, and you've just been so pleasant always, and you're always here afterwards, getting tables moved around, all that stuff that the public doesn't see as well, and so we just really appreciate all of that. Would anybody else like to make a comment?
Yeah, I just try to learn something from everybody that I meet and interact with, and I, your demeanor is just outstanding for the task that you have out there. I know that's not the easiest thing to do, when the lines are long and getting people in the right way and the safe way, and yet, I just see no difference in your attitude. I think that's remarkable, that our community could use more Peter Horstmanns. Thank you.
I do think we need to take official action on this, though, so could I have a motion?
I'm of some of.
It's been moved by Councilperson Morris and seconded by Councilperson Nation, that
Resolution Five, 2019, be passed. All those that pay will say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed. We should have said the best to last, but we knew we had some folks who wanted to be here who would be difficult for them to sneak through the whole meeting, so thank you very much. Next item on the agenda.
Appropriation for 2019, $469,677.17 from Community Crossing Grant Number 0492 to come cross grant paving number 432105.
Petitioner, is Aaron ready?
Madam President, members of the council, Chuck in as city engineer. This is an appropriation for community crossings, the projects that we've got going right now. A total of $496,000 we're planning on using for additional paving this year. If you have to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on appropriation Number Four, 2019?
I'm Donald Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street. I would like to hear some explanations as where these crossings are, and maybe why we picked the ones we picked. The reason I ask this, I live in this city and have lived here all my life. There's a lot of places where the sidewalk and walkways could be improved, and one of the questions I do like to ask the engineer is, when they put down the paint, it's yellow. Why is it look really bright the first day or two? A week later, it's a little dull, and within a few months, it's hard to see it at all. I'd like to see if, what the reason is about that, and if anything can be done about that so that the, basically, it can be more safe and the people know where to safely walk across the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to address that. We basically have two different kinds of strip that we use. One of them is paint. That's what the street department is equipped to do that, that work. On the new section of Mar- On the new section of Margaret Avenue, they have what they call thermoplastic. This is basically, it's tape, fairly thick, goes down, lasts much longer. With the street department's painting truck, we normally paint the streets every year, every couple of years. The thermoplastic will last longer, but of course, it's more expensive. That's really the striping in a nutshell. These, these projects were part of the community crossings application for the grant from last year. As you've noticed, the, these projects are up and going right now in Poplar, and then we've just about wrapped up First and Holman, but that's what these projects are for. We've already expended the money. The state has reimbursed us for this money, and we need to appropriate it to so we can keep that going.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to comment? Counsel? First of all, I'd like to thank you for the improvements to First and Holman. I don't know if anybody's had the chance to go through there or not, but really nice job, and, and thanks for as quick as it got done.
Thank you.
If there's no.
Chuck, is, is Poplar Street the one they're working on now? Is that what you referred to, out near Basil's, that stretch?
Between Twenty-Fifth and Brown, yes.
Okay.
Right.
Yes. Counselperson Allen?
There's no further questions. I move that we approve Appropriation Four.
Excuse me, we have to vote to vote on that.
Oh, there's no further questions. I move that we vote to vote on Appropriation Four, 2019.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilperson Allen and seconded by Councilperson Nation that we take a vote on Appropriation Four, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Counselperson Allen?
I move that we approve Appropriation Four, 2019, as presented.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilperson Allen, segmented by Councilperson Garrison, that we approve Appropriation Four, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appropriation Four is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Special Ordinance Nine, 2019, rezoning of property located at 1706 Harding Avenue and 207 Holman Street. Area Plan Commission has not met. They will meet next Wednesday.
And for the public, what that means, that the area plan has not met, it means that we can't take action on these items tonight, but we will introduce them and hear information about them. Please go ahead.
Jeff Lind, Lind Law Firm, 400 Ohio. I hear, I'm representing Zach and Courtney Reagan, Reagan. They are operating a custodial business out of the property and hope to expand their business to include ceramic coating or painting of metal parts. And in the course of looking into expanding their business, we're disappointed to find that their business or their property is owned R2 and has been forever. In your material, in the petition, are photographs, color photographs of the building itself. It's a block building before cinder block existed. It's been there forever. And first, they apologize, had no idea that it was owned R2. I bought it from a relative on contract, and the properties to the, certainly to the north and northwest are more M1 or M2 type properties. I do want to show you, if I can move this over. This property is directly behind Big Red Liquor's home. Does that help you with any kind of perspective on where it's located?
Are you insinuating that we all know where the liquor store is?
Yes. I didn't say y'all go in there. I just said, no worries. All right. So, if each of you can see it, this is the way the property works now. These are two lots. This home is dilapidated. It needs to come down. It, it will come down. If zoning is approved, it'll come down within ninety days, as will the garage that's affiliated with what was a residential structure. Zach Reagan and his wife Courtney are here. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not worth living. This just shows, you know, it's gonna be gone. So they have no intention of immediately extending the building. All of the operations will be contained within the building. No outside storage, and M1 covers both custodial operation center and coating or painting of material. I asked Zach this afternoon, the process for coating, metals with ceramic, with the process he'll use will not require any more than 250 degrees. So there's no great heat applied. He said you could do it in a toaster oven. I don't think he's going to. So next week, we're gonna ask, well, one other thing I'd point out, in your, as you know, we have to attach copies, the deeds to the petition. And the deed to the fee owners for the block building was from Moore Langdon. So it was part of the Moore Langdon complex, I suppose, and yet it was zoned R2. If you have any questions that I can't answer, I'm sure that Zach and Courtney can.
Are there any comments from the public on this request for rezoning?
I heard his presentation, and it was good, but it was very surface. Members, there's no detail given to you, nor me, nor anybody listening. I know from firsthand experience of what he's talking about. That is one of the most dangerous ways to paint there is. You have to have the proper equipment on your face to protect you when you do it. If you don't, you've got problems like I've got, period. My main question is for him, where he's gonna open this place up at? How is the air coming in, and how is the air going out? Because I've told you guys before, and I said to the public at large, the number one thing that we have to have in any community is air. You don't live without air. Anything you do that will pollute the air has to be considered before you open up any business like that. Now, am I saying it can't be done? No. I've worked in places. It can be done. But I haven't heard him give any details how they intend to do that. Now, the air from this paint will only go so far. So I don't want to hear him tell me how close to the park is he, how close to a school is he, how close to a community where there's people living. Is this place in the middle of a residential area, or is it in the middle of a place where there's nothing around? Paint will have a time to come down and drop and not hurt anybody or pollute the air. None of that was spoken. I hope you guys will ask those questions. Thank you.
Would you like to hear from Zach about the process?
Sure.
Zach?
Zach Reagan, 5695 South Ernest Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, 4702. The normal process for any application for the ceramic coating would involve sand blasting with 100 to 120 grit aluminum oxide, which would be contained in a sand blasting unit. Depending on the application or material, material you're doing, that could be scuffed with just as little as a Scotch-Brite pad. No residue, nothing, nothing crazy as far as chemicals or anything like that. You would need to degrease the material to make sure there's no contaminants from your hands or anything from the environment, such as oil or dirt or dust. Then that would go into painting. The ceramic coating is applied in such a way, it's so thin, it's literally a fraction of the human hair width. It's .01 mil thickness. Very little product gets sprayed. It's very containable. There's no special respirators or any kind of ventilation systems that you would need to ensure no environmental contamination. I mean, you can get on your skin, it washes off. There are, he was, I know he mentioned the, the baking. There is an air cured formulation, and there is a heat cured where it would be baked at 250 degrees for two hours. But as far as an environmental impact, there's relatively nothing that can happen from it, so.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on Special Ordinance Nine? Counsel? Well, we can't vote on this this week. Jeff, is there anything else from you?
No, I'm always ready to see you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Next item of business?
Special Ordinance Eleven, 2019, rezoning of property located at 2528 South Seventh Street.
My name is Lisa Lively. The address is 2528 South Seventh Street. There are two properties that were built on this lot many years ago, so we needed to be rezoned to R1 planned development so that we can put the property up for sale to move my mother to assisted living. So we need the setback, there need to be for the two parking spaces per property.
President Crossen, just to clarify a little, the property is existing, and it has been in use for however many years as two dwelling units on one parcel. It's just one of those that have been around forever. They're in the process of selling the property, I believe. Your brother is also on, on the prop.
Yeah, my mother's on the property. She lives on, it's actually her house, yes. She lives in it, we're all on it.
And in order to sell it, they, they need to be zoned properly, so it's going to be a planned development so that if they rebuild or do anything, it'd go back to an R1 for a single-family house.
So any member of the public who'd like to comment on Special Ordinance Eleven? Thank you very much. Take it up next week. Next item of business?
Resolution One, 2019, designating an area commonly identified as 200 South Sixth Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, as the economic revitalization area for the purpose of a ten-year real property tax abatement, 200 South Sixth LLC. This is for adoption.
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here this evening. I'm representing 200 South Sixth LLC. They are the owners of, the address is 20228 South Sixth Street. You may know it as the former YMCA downtown. They own the YMCA and then the lot, the vacant lot next to it. They are here tonight requesting a ten-year tax abatement. Unfortunately, this evening, I would ask that you table it until next week. We found a couple items we'd like to tweak in the paperwork that we've submitted, as well as a representative from this entity couldn't be here this evening, and they can be here next week, so I would ask that you table it. This, this is a project for housing downtown. The, the plan is to have 34 units in the YMCA building. Four of those will be one-bedroom apartments, 19 will be two-bedroom apartments, and 11 will be three-bedroom apartments, and there'll be four ADA compatible units. And then they're also proposing to build a new building at the corner of Sixth and Poplar that will have six three-bedroom townhouses, and then there'll be parking in between. So that's the project. This is a, this is one of those lots of moving parts projects. There's tax credits involved. The application for that indicated a ten-year tax abatement was gonna be requested and achieved, so there's a lot of, if we don't do this, this doesn't work. And then there's also involvement with some TIF money. We've got support from redevelopment on this project, and they are, have agreed to assist with some TIF money. So again, I'd ask you to table next week, but I just want to give a little lay down on the project. If, if anybody obviously has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Or if you have any questions, I'd be obviously happy to receive an email, get those answers if I can't answer and get them from my client. So with that, if anybody has any questions.
Does any member of the public who'd like to comment about Resolution One, 2019?
Well, I don't know what it is about tonight, but again, I'm an expert. My name is Donald Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street, and I worked at the YMCA and volunteered at the YMCA for more than 15 years. I know all the physical problems with the building and what was causing them problems way back when, and I have some real interesting questions for the people who want to turn it into apartments. I like to hear them explain what they're gonna do about the heating of the building, because I can tell you firsthand that the heating of the building, the way it was currently built, and you'd have to make some, I assume you're gonna make major repairs, it would take care of part of that problem. But your problem lies in that I know the YMCA is heated by two gigantic gas furnaces, and it heats the entire building. There's no way you could have separate living consist, buildings in there unless you provide either a new way to heat those buildings or fix the two furnaces that are at least 80 years old. I'd like the, I'd like the board here to ask these people to give some details on how they're gonna heat the building. Then they also want to build new buildings. Well, when you build something new, that's, I don't care, because you're gonna, the contractor's gonna build the building, and they're gonna build up the coat of now. Your problem is how you're gonna remodel the YMCA and make it livable. And I think that's a fair question that you guys need to put straight at these people. And again, I'm not against this. Don't get me wrong. But I think there's some serious questions, and I know for a fact that the number one problem they'll have is how they're gonna heat that building and how it's gonna be paid for, including how much the people renting the place is gonna pay on their heating bill. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to respond to that.
You know, Mr. Hyde brings up some good points, and I think what he brings up is one of the reasons this building sat vacant for over 10 years. As you know, there's been a lot of groups in front of you in the last few years building or renovating buildings in our downtown or close vicinity, and they all need assistance of some sort. And this project is no different. This is a, this is, this is dependent upon this abatement. No abatement, the project doesn't go, because you don't get the abatement, you don't get the tax credits, the project's done. And I think that's why, one of the reasons this project's sat vacant for so long. And Mr. Hyde's correct. This, this is not a building that has gotten better with age. There is some issues. And speaking with my clients, they have already contacted and have worked with some local contractors in trying to resolve these issues. They've contacted, and they're working with BNS Plumbing for the plumbing and heating cooling issues because it is such an issue, Crown Electric, another local contractor, and then Lowe Brothers for the roof. They have identified, and they know that this is not gonna be an easy project. And because of, I guess, the wonderful world we live in, there are government entities out there willing to assist to, to make these projects happen, and they are willing to try to do that here for the YMCA and save this building. So thank you, Don, for bringing up those, those comments. And if anybody has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions in council?
I've been asked if it was gonna be government subsidized housing.
The, the term is rental housing tax credit project. I, I think it's affordable housing.
Affordable. Okay, I yield, that's, that was asking me twice. I yield, that's, that was asked of me twice.
Counselperson, answer.
Could you, before the next council meeting, give documentation that shows that without a tax abatement, that the tax credits would not be implemented?
Sure. I yield.
Any other questions from counsel?
We're lucky to have companies who are willing to, like this company from Wisconsin, who are willing to step forward and take on tough projects like this. This particular building is in my district. I've been interested in it since before it closed and finding, helping find the next use for it. As Richard intimated, and my fellow council members will remember, we've played a role in, a small role this council has, in helping find the next use for the former Miller Parrot Craftery, which we think of probably as Lighthouse Mission across from Gilbert Park. That's a similar kind of funding situation and similar kind of target audience for the apartments that will result from this. We also have, you know, things like the Demming Hotel and the Riverfront Lofts, which were big, complicated projects too, with their own challenges, not limited to heating and windows and those kinds of things, but they did have to figure that out. On the point of heating and cooling, you know, it's not our problem to figure that out. It's the problem of the company that is, that's embarking on this adventure to try to make this building better and to find, help it find its next use. While I may be technically interested in that, just because I'm a preservationist and somebody who works actively to save old buildings and help them find their new purpose, the fact that I don't sit here and grill petitioners about those details is not an obligation in my duty to do my job. It's a reality check on what we're, on what our role is as a council. I don't need to tell you that. Everybody around this table understands that. But I feel like I do need to tell Mr. Hyde that. And I hope that that comment is taken in the spirit in which it's offered. Our role is to figure out if this makes sense from a big-picture perspective and if the petitioner has all of their information put together to actually qualify for the abatement for which they're applying. I'm relieved and delighted that we have this company interested in the YMCA. And on that note, I'll yield, look forward to next week.
Any other comments? Not? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah. When we chatted briefly about that this afternoon, you know, I mentioned to you a number of the numbers didn't make a lot of sense to me. And, you know, I'll ask those questions, you know, next week, and hopefully the owners or the team putting this together can, can answer those, and we work that if need be.
One of the reasons for the abatement is just because I conveyed those, those comments you made, and I'd like for them to be able to enjoy the opportunity to discuss that with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Spence.
Thank you very much.
We will need action, because this is a resolution.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Counselperson Oller.
I move that we table Resolution 1, 2019, until next week's meeting.
May 9.
May 9.
It's been moved by Counselperson Oller and seconded by Counselperson Nation that this matter be tabled until our May 9 meeting. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
One further thing, it's my intention to get documents to you Wednesday. I figured Tuesday, we might be doing other things. So, I figure Wednesday morning, you'll be ready to read some information about tax abatements. So, I want to be able to provide that to you.
Or sooner.
Okay. So, I.
I appreciate your assistance.
I'll be, I'll.
Thank you. Next item of business?
The review of GaugeView Enterprises CF1 Form, Resolution 7, 2013. You should have a copy in front of you. According to the form, they estimated originally that they would have 13 employees and four additional, and they're showing 15 total. Yes, 15 total. So, they originally said that they were going to have 17. They have 15.
Just a reminder to the council, we have to vote who's either in or not in substantial compliance, so as you're looking at them, keep that in mind. Are there any questions or comments from counsel on the first, see if I forget gauge view enterprises?
Yeah, I just want to comment on the estimated column, the second and third salary numbers, the retained and the additional. If you add those together, it's $865,000. If you look at the actual number over in the first line in the actual column, you know, it's $981,000. So, whereas they have, maybe they have two more people than they did have, two less than maybe they thought they would have, but the payroll is over $116,000 higher. Of course, that's what the taxes paid on the county tax.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
If there are no more comments or questions, I move that we find GaugeView, let's see, RS7, 2013 in substantial compliance.
Second. It's been moved by Counselperson Nation, seconded by Counselperson Devine, that we find RS7, 2013 in substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's so approved. Next item.
Review of Warren Village CF1 Form for Resolution 13, 2012. You should have a copy in front of you. Just for clarification, Warren Village does have two tax abatements. We reviewed their newest one last month. They estimated they would have four employees and no additional employees, and they currently have six. So, that would be two additional employees.
Are there any questions or comments by counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
If there are no questions or comments, I move that we find Warren Village Resolution 13, 2012 in substantial compliance.
Second. It's been moved by Counselperson Nation and seconded by Counselperson Garrison that we find Warren Village in substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item.
Review of Glasgow CF1 Form, Resolution 9, 2007. I had this abatement listed as completed. That last year was, was the last year that they would have it. So, they showed that they were going to have 71 employees, I'm sorry, 74 employees total estimated on their SB1, and it appears they have 79.
Any questions or comments by counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
Michelle, or Eddie, give us guidance on this. What do we do? Do we act? Are we giving them an abatement to which they may not be, which they may not be able to claim?
We, we had a discussion with the county last year. This issue came up, and I think the general consensus was is that the final checks and balances falls on the county to make that determination. So, I would recommend that if counsel believes it is in substantial compliance, to go ahead and move forward that way. The county does their own calculations, no matter what, and that will fall on them. I talked to Mr. Bramble about that last year, and there shouldn't be an issue.
And as a reminder, they now have to file a demand with the state.
Oh, yeah, there is a second, there is a whole other second checks and balance system in place on the state side as well.
Good. Is that a new thing?
I don't know. It may have been relatively new. I don't think it's this year. It's been in place for at least two years now, if not longer.
Thank you. You.
Yes. Counselperson Oller.
Do we know why there's not any assessed value on the building? Is it on the tax roll?
Are you talking about on section four, actual?
On section four, the actual. There's a land value, but there's no building value. I mean, they've got the proposed, estimated.
I'm not sure why they didn't complete that. It is on, the last time I checked, it was on the tax roll, but I don't know. Some petitioners send these complete, some of them do not.
Madam President?
Yes.
If there's no further question or comment, I move that Glasscall's Resolution 9, 2007 be found in substantial compliance.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Nation and seconded by Counselperson Morris that we find Glasco LLC in substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Uh-oh. What do we do without George?
Without George, yeah.
Wait till next week.
Somebody show your leadership.
Madam President?
And Mr. Devine.
I would like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Devine and seconded by Counselperson Nation that we be adjourned. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Michael Perry, thank you very much, everyone.